Do not make it going free, we can not choose not to do it. If we need them, which is this, we have used them probably four or five times to die the month. Uh, chief, and uh, the expenses of town would incur. If we had our own doors, it would be, you know, at hundreds of thousands of dollars. We usually go for a, for a rail that leaking down there, they broke eighteen thousand. It would probably cost us, we had a problem like a clean hackers or something like that, it costs us, you know, thirty, forty thousand. Now, understand that's all rea-, you, you, you can get that back on your own, so try to get something on the road. You know?
Well, certainly what is Pan Am, would see this, have you talked to CSX?
Yes.
Are they willing to, to be able to be more supportive than Pan Am or?
No, neither of them are.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I'll, I got something on next, I've talked to a race this week.
Okay.
I've talked to them recently about the, the new pile of railroad sites here on the highway. I mean, if it stays as long as it wanted it under the railroad road over here, I would say for twenty-two years, it might move it. The only reason they moved it is the sale.
So, Hopie reached out to them, and they actually came up here, and I, I, I never done that.
I've never done that.
Yeah, and they said that they were going to be putting a program together to actually clean up all the tides. I guess, I guess she'll mistake it, right?
Yeah, they had, they had to do that with the federal government, we wanted to make the purchase too, because it's, you know, it's been a mess media, so. It's not just us, it's every other, you know, every other area. So, you know, I have talked to them, um, we actually did a couple of trainings come up with them, so they're a lot more responsive to that than we were before. But Pan Am was too when it first took over, so.
The railroad isn't responsible for maintenance or cleanup?
They, they are, and if you have a major situation, it goes along with the week, it's something that we have to evacuate, we have to do all this stuff like that. We have to have the proper tools and equipment to do that, and you can't wait for the railroad, you know, that would take hours.
No, I understand, I'm just like.
But again, over the years, we're trying to get a reimbursement for the railroad, you know, um, we, we've got a few things for the railroad, you know, we, we've sent them invoices for. Not, it's like, you know, you can do your smart show, but, you know, railroad is somewhere over here, so, you know, they don't, they don't clean up, they don't, uh, you know, they, they, they have their own sort of rules when they do it. They don't set the rules, and in fact, actually, the only people, the only people who can, who can actually ask, we make, make the fire out of these tracks if they want to. But the federal government, don't listen to the railroad, nope. But that's not, that's not only, you know, the only thing that would be in for, could be for, uh, you know, any, any, you know, gas, any tanker, any fuel spill, or something like that. You know, you don't have the resources, nobody does the resources to handle that, and so these, this CECO stock team, that's, it's almost, it's on the same deal as, as your.
Spotting.
Your spot team, you know, we, these guys specialize in, in chemical skills and, and that type of stuff, so. CECO's chiefs, again, that's a little bit, but that's money that then went from, we paid, um, four hundred dollar membership to four hundred dollar S C D A assessment to them. And now it's gone to a thousand for the whole thing, so. Now, a thousand leaves, that's not two hundred dollars.
That's gone to twenty-five percent.
CECO's chiefs are, um, again, they have the Pan Am, they have all, all the special equipment that, you know, each town uses, that comes over and fills our air bottles. A whole bunch of stuff they do.
It's a good resource.
It's a great resource, yeah.
Uh, you have another question?
No, I'm just curious about the road and stuff, like, there's no, is there an exchange, like, did they purchase that, and like, how does that, um? I don't know, I just, I guess I never thought about how the railroad interacts with the town before, so I was just thinking about that.
They never, they have no problem calling some deep water on their engines, you know, they stop that, you know, they do, they stop that, we've told them multiple times.
For the most part, except for probably through you, they don't really interact with the town. They're a landowner, um, you know, they own the track and a bunch of other parcels physically along the track. Um, but for the most part, they have.
Somebody stopped, I don't know, I saw, like, two weeks ago, uh, somebody was having seizure down, so they stopped down there, and it's like, oh. You know, you, you.
Those ex-hospital, you just get going.
You give passes in there, you can.
Um, okay, so, Schiff calls in occurrences. Let's talk about the big relative number. So last year, uh, we basically were, you know, looked at stepping into this issue, utilizing some of the ARPA funds to offset some of the program as we work forward. So, am I reading this correctly, that what you're looking for this year is eighty-five thousand?
Yeah, so, so we, we've, we've been working, I mean, if we need to start a last chance, uh, it was first of all to put it in place. And, uh, as we grow, and, you know, our, you know, I look at our, our last quarter, it was about twenty-one thousand dollars in expenses, so.
For the quarter?
For the quarter, so I'm looking at that, and I kind of reviewed it, and I said, that's about a maximum we're gonna see. So, obviously, twenty-one thousand for the eight doesn't pay it, so I just, I brought that up by five. You know, uh, I, I just look at it, it was pretty, pretty good night coverage, I'm gonna say about eighty-five, I think it was about eighty-five percent on night coverage and day coverage or something. About, we had about forty-five to fifty percent, people sign up for day coverage, which is a lot better than I thought it would be. And that's probably, until we get any new people, more new people, uh, I don't think they can save twenty-nine right now. So, I kind of use the twenty-one, twenty-one thousand as a, as a figure for the four.
Do you have, um, any, can you give us any of the, um, quarterly expenses that you are citing? Like, can we see how many calls were put out, how much of this money have you actually spent down so far? Because we, you got eighty thousand for this year, correct? So, if it's, you know, if it's only been three quarters, that's sixty thousand, so.
Right, we haven't, um, I, I, I had, I've done my sense of payment, I didn't really do it, but, um. It was twenty-one thousand for the last quarter, pre- previous quarter, quarter was sixteen, and the one before that was, was three thousand and change. So, we, we haven't spent, we haven't spent the even from last year, uh, not even at sixty, but again, we decided, you know.
Right, my.
You know, we, we decided to be.
So you expect, though, that there's not a seasonality to this, this is just basically ramping up to a, what I would assume would be a fairly steady state at this point?
Yes.
For next year?
Yes.
At the right time, one of those.
Yep. Calls are actually down this year.
Really?
A little bit. The medical calls are probably, the fire calls are down.
Interesting. People stay home at last night smoking.
You do those medical calls too?
Excuse me?
You do the medical calls too?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're also looking for two Warreners, fifty thousand to truck, two thousand to cab. What's the, uh, what's the target on the truck amount?
Target is, the target for a truck is four and a half years.
Yes, I, I, yeah.
So, don't add a third?
No, at this point in time, what will ca-, what will it cost?
We have worked with two different manufacturers right now, to get started, specs, and get something together. None of them will give you a price.
Okay.
You know what they're doing right now? They're saying to everybody, and it's every manufacturer.
Two years?
You give us whatever you get, you know, it's two years to get the truck, right now, it's twenty-four to twenty-eight months, live out about it. You, once, it, once that deadline approaches, you give us what you have right now, and then we'll set you up a lease purchase for us. They can't, they can't. So, C grade right now is in bankruptcy, because they set prices, and they get towns fighting on Burrell, on, it's not really, Lingle, or Pampart. Littleton, North, C grade delivered it with a bill for two hundred eighty thousand dollars above.
Above what they.
What they signed the contract for.
So, and what, did Littleton take the truck, or did they?
No, they're fighting them right now, but C grade's got all the country, and they, they, they said, you guys gotta help us out, we're fighting bankruptcy, so. So.
Didn't have your risk in the contract.
They're telling me right now, I'm trying to give you six hundred, six hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand, and that could be, that could be way off in two years.
Of course.
I'm hoping that things are gonna settle in, never, anybody thinks things are gonna go back to where they were normal, and then that.
So you have four thirty in there now?
Yeah, four thirty, um, yes, four thirty now.
Okay, so you're looking for another fifty, we get Jeff to four eighty.
Yeah.
So, in basically two to three more years, presumably, presumably, assuming pricing.
Right.
Doesn't move too far, that's about what's, when you start probably looking to buy.
Yeah, yeah, I think if we wait three years, we're gonna be in trouble, but what we got now, is everything, it's gonna be all worth it, it's not gonna be worth as much, so. Um, I did think, you know, um.
Would, would you put an order in, like, recognizing this whole contract, pricing problem, would you prefer to put an order in, let's say, next year, with what we have? As using that for a down payment on a contract?
I think it will take us a year to even get these specs ready to go.
Okay.
Yes, so I would think not, not this year, it's a possibility that next year, we would like to try to put an order for a truck, do twenty-three.
So you'll do a warrant, let's assume, not this March, but a year from March, you put a warrant article for another fifty?
Yeah.
And a warrant article for the approval to go and order a truck?
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's the thought, I mean, so that's, that's another three, three and a half years.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
Which makes it tough, because, you know, one, trainings, vehicles away, you can't, you can't get prices on that deal, you know? Uh, which brings up another point, is our engine two, our oldest truck right now, which is, it's, it's a spare, spare. Uh, it's sitting there, it does not get used, it costs money every day for maintenance, which is, you know, believe it or not, it'll change and move, or LOF, I don't know, it's a thousand bucks.
It's not fifty dollars now, it's got a.
It's not, it's not a car, so, um, you know, I think it'd probably be a good time to entertain getting rid of that truck, and that.
Okay.
Uh, putting, you know, a bit of war, calling some huge manufacturer, and see what we can get for it. Used vehicles right now are top, some are top of all, um, and we'll do two things, we can do that, and if you guys are, if I go, so like, I get that money, so we can put it towards another truck. And it opens up some space in the station.
How much, how much do you think you can get for it?
I would, I guess I'm gonna get twenty, I would, twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, something like that, okay.
Somewhere in that, that range.
Not two hundred thousand, that would make life easy.
Eighty-seven, let's get twelve thousand dollars, so, you know, let's. I may need way off the line, so, I think, it, it may not be worth it, you know, we, we take a look at, uh, if, if it's okay, I'll start looking at that. Um, that'll also open us, open up some space, so we can get some of this equipment, but it needs to be sorted inside of the side, you know, for now.
Okay.
It's sort of a temporary thing.
Uh, I don't have a problem with that, do you guys have some problems that are starting to look, falling use?
No, no.
Great.
I mean, every year, I lose the house.
How about it? Can I have a little salary, whatever you can, um, yeah, and, you know, money's on you, so, I mean, we'll just think about how to apply that towards a, towards an extra.
So, my concern that you brought up before too, is that the newer trucks aren't going to fit in the building that we have right now, right?
No, that's not, the nu- newer trucks don't fit in the back section of the building. So, there's a building built in front of you, we'll see, and anything right now will fit in.
It won't.
The new one, yes, we're not gonna, we're not, the way the button has gone on the past ten, ten years, it's just reduced in price, but we used to roll out of that station, fill every truck plus four or five person bags, we get to the ball. And now we, we don't do it. So, you know, the balance, that, the old truck is old, it's something to recognize, I'm not a insurance companies anymore.
Oh.
It's eighty-seven, I mean, it's forty years old.
Yep.
So, um, it's not a market, so, it's, it's any money, you know, I mean, I wouldn't give it for my either.
All right.
So, I think, the answer to that, we don't, we don't need the three engine anymore, so we currently have three, um.
But that wasn't my question, I was talking about as we're going forward, and you're purchasing a new truck, I thought, we've had this discussion, you had said that new trucks wouldn't fit in that building.
Right, and when we discussed the, um, back when we discussed the addition, the idea was, when you buy a new truck, say, our engine one, which is, would have been our third oldest truck, would slide back into that position. That's correct, they would not fit in it, our engine one or engine three will not fit in that at the station. But where we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate a new truck, you know, when we go to buy a new truck, um, in two or three years, we'll, we'll trade our engine one in. With, so we'll always just, we'll have two trucks, and we'll straighten our rescue, no longer three trucks.
So it wasn't necessarily the size of the truck, but it was just the amount of space that you had in the building? So getting rid of engine two frees up that.
Frees up a little space, doesn't cure our old space problem, but, um, I don't feel now is the time to, you know, even think about it, emission or something like that, it's just, we don't have enough people. It was different in the end, so when we said, what can I, what can I do in this, so, I, I wouldn't even have taken the mission right now. Unless Chief wants to go to police station or something like that, I'll, I'll write on the table.
I'm not wanting one of that. Uh, okay, um, anything else for Chief?
Jeff, how much, uh, I'm looking at your fuel budget, fourteen hundred? How much do you want to be?
Well, you know, I gave them down, we're down this year, um, we've only spent, uh, that fourteen hundred, which, which is good, I mean, I just had that figured out. We're only at about five, six hundred, and we just spilled up there again today, so we're about seven hundred and fourteen hundred, so I'm thinking with the increase prices, we're okay on that. On electricity? Yeah, I just took.
Rolled the dice.
The bills, rolled the dice a little bit, but I took my, my, I compared, since August first, I, I changed, um, in pricing, I compared those bills to last year's bills, and they were over eighty-five dollars. So I, I use that figure for, for next year. Heat, again, I'm rolling the dice, because propane, I did want to talk to you guys, do you guys, I heard you, you guys locked in with the background this year?
We did.
Okay, 'cause I do have time, and, and it's been good for us.
Yep.
And I get a little scared, and asked for a lock-in price, and they said it's too late, and I says, it's never too late.
No, it's never too late, but they, they just elect him to do it.
They're gonna call me tomorrow, um, and I, I said basically, I said, listen, you know, everybody, every, we use a lot, we, we spent eight thousand dollars last year, eating at places. There's a lot of propane companies that want that business, so.
Yeah.
If you want to keep it, a lot of work, so I, I didn't, you know, jump all over you guys, I don't know what the lock-in price would be.
I have to go back and look, um, but it was, we did that, what, three, four months ago, so it was a, it was a decent.
They always treat us very well, but again, I, I'm just kind of guessing, who knows? If you could tell me how much propane is gonna be?
Well, if I can.
Yeah, I'll sit here, I'll, 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 I'll sit here. We hope it's not gonna be low.
Yeah. Let's see.
Who knows, it would be nice if it was.
If it is, though, let me see, if I'm not doing well.
Right.
Um, if we, if we don't grant the extra sixty thousand in the ARPA funds that we have left, what are you going to do?
I asked for my general, my budget, so I'm gonna ask their crazy taxes.
Because if, if this is something that's going to continue, we're not going to have this money again next year, so I'm just kind of wondering what your plan is long-term for maintaining this level for your colleagues?
My plan is right now, is I said, you know, we're lucky enough to be able to offset the labor, um, I don't see it going away, if it goes away, I can tell you there's a lot of labor expenses coming. You know, you, you, you got no choice of that, whether to contract another, I don't know, hire another guy, I tell you, yeah, I don't. I'm just going, I wouldn't actually work with a green energy break now, we won't put on four, and that's gonna cost about four hundred eighty thousand dollars.
You want some on one, is it?
Four or five thousand.
Four and five hundred, yeah, hundred twenty, full, full, yeah. No, I, I, I think the issue here is, it's a two-step process, right? One is, what are we gonna approve in terms of the budget? And then the second question, which is related to the first, but not contingent on the first, is, do we fund this, whatever we budget, do we fund it via property tax? Or do we fund it and utilize ARPA funds to basically, um, offset the property tax increase? And one of the reasons that we were looking at this last year was basically to, recognizing that we were gonna be stepping into this, is utilizing ARPA funds to basically take it in, in bite-sized chunks, so that we don't have a radical lead in, in property taxes. How do we choose to, to deal with the other, the second question here, I think is still, still an open one, you know, we still have to address the first one, which is, what are we gonna approve or recommend for? And that'll go before the town, we'll go before deliberative, people can change it to deliberative if they want to, if they don't like the numbers that we propose, and then we'll go before the town for a full vote.
Yeah, so I, I kind of looked at you guys to figure, you know, I'm about to figure out, I'll get, how are we gonna fund it, I mean, it's, you know, ARPA's gonna go away.
Yeah, there's only a certain amount of money in the ARPA, that, you know, could we utilize more ARPA funds for this? We could, um, it's just a question of what the priorities are, I mean, in all honesty, ARPA is, is basically, until we use it up, is basically a property tax mitigation tool, that's all it is. Um, because depending upon what we approve for a budget, we have to fund it, so we have to raise it either via property tax, or if we don't raise it via property tax, utilize ARPA to keep the tax bill down. That's just the nature of it, um, and so, you know, it's, it's a, we'll have to deliberate over this, and think about, in the context of the total budget, what's this gonna do to the tax rate? What do we, what do we supplement with ARPA funds, if anything, and, and then, how do we address this to the town?
Well, if I remember correctly, we have quite a bit of money in the unencumbered funds balance?
We can't use that for.
No, I understand.
For the operating budget, so if we approve an operating budget, that's, that number is, is, um, a, a, it basically allows them to spend their money. But we can't say, well, it's a hundred seventy-three thousand dollar budget, but we'll utilize a hundred thousand in the unspent, so that, you know, we don't have to raise the hundred thousand in tax. We can't do it that way, at the end of next year, we could utilize more of the unreserved fund balance to basically adjust the tax rate. But with respect to the operating budget, those are top lines that we have to go through the process first, and make sure that there's enough there to get the services that we are asking for as a board and as a town.
No, I understand that, but I was talking about using that, that could be a tool to help bring down that property tax burden.
Yes.
Later on, I understand how the budget is supposed to work.
All right. It's not pretty.
No, it's not pretty.
Any other questions for the chief at this point? Okay, Steve?
Right.
I'm sure we'll get back to you, and go further down the budget row. All right, hello folks? Hey, David, next up is Selber, I didn't hear you, can you wear a seatbelt?
You're always right on the desk, so you do a lot of good with it. I'm really quick, though, it's a little bit. Um, okay, so you have in front of you, um, last year's budget request, and then this year's budget request. On the second page, sorry, I don't realize that I, I should have played that, you can see between the two pages, um, how we spent the money. As far as senior luncheon goes, uh, I raised it a little bit, it didn't quite, we were at, um, twelve hundred last year, we have the most seniors we've ever had at a senior luncheon. Um, I don't know if that was because of, um, people coming out of COVID or whatever, people seemed very excited to come. Um, they had a good time, and about forty-five people that we served, and that's literally from, for twenty years, that's the most we've ever had, so that was pretty. Forty-five, I think it was forty-five to fifty, I can't quite remember what it was, but it was up there, and we did, um, deliver, right, guys delivered, and we did lunch here, both, um, between the two, I think it was.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so I, I would expect that we're gonna get that again, people do seem to like it, people seem to be, it's been a little bit revitalized, I guess. So, I did add a little bit more, um, to that, and I think that between, um, you know, a potential, um, cost, um, heightened, you know, the cost is to fear that. Um, I don't know that, that would be unreasonable to see it go up, um, this year. And then on the, um, Memorial Day, we did raise that, um, up again, because of, um, well, quite a drum, I, um, I know who's gonna raise my price, and, um, the luncheon went up this year. Our tables and chairs were really sage, so many there, so, um, that was great, and the reason that our overall budget, um, is down three hundred from what I have listed here, is that the, for some reason, I didn't realize this till I was doing this today. That they didn't cash the check at the community church for the dinners, but we paid for the veterans, so that's great, and all of us, and that's that difference. So yes, I did raise it, we were at, um, thirty-six eighty-two, and I did put it up a little bit to, um, get us a little bit more as far as, you know, the town flyer, and those other things that I do foresee could go up this year. Um, the holiday celebration, um, Charlotte didn't spend her entire budget, but, oh, sorry, that's, oh, fall festival, I, she didn't spend her entire budget, but I do see that she probably would next year, so maybe a bit of that eighteen fifty. We didn't get a ch- chance to talk to her before the meeting, but I will, and I'll get back to her, that is adjusting, but I would see keeping that at eighteen fifty, um, and then if she needs an adjustment, I will come back with reasoning for that. Um, oh, the holiday, the holiday celebration hasn't happened yet, and I'm sorry, I haven't seen them there, um, but I raised that slightly, just because, um, the other costs don't have their way there, so. And that's the first spending day, I hope, in December, if you guys have a date. And that's a pretty level cost, but again, in the future, whatever we do for the land animals, whether it be pollines or whatever.
Questions?
Um, like I said, I'll come back on, uh, when I talk to Charlotte, um, and just, but I, I would definitely put on the eighteen fifty.
For the fall festival?
Eighteen, eighteen fifty, okay, okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No. Thank you.
All right, Dave, conservation?
Nice, yeah, we saw my, yeah, so I just.
No worries, no worries, your, your schedule is seven-thirty, and it's seven-thirty-one, so you're right in time.
Look at me. Just to, to just support. Anyway, yeah, uh, here, we've increased our budget by a hundred dollars, uh, from the year, from forty-two fifty to forty-three fifty, basically. Um, and, uh, a lot of that has to do with monitoring of our engines, uh, Santa Claus has, uh, increased their costs, up to thirty-three fifty, I believe, is the last number we got.
And what's that line for?
That's, uh, part of, the subpart of the conservation budget for the easement model.
Oh, the easement model, right.
There's a top end.
Yep.
Test to do.
Yep.
So we need that money right off. And the great day monitoring for a thousand dollars will be paid, and particularly, that's paid around Christmas time, and that's the, uh, the Scataquaw Region Estuaries Project, trying to monitor the estuaries, and we're helping out there. As are a lot of other conservation commissions. And miscellaneous, we haven't had too many miscellaneous.
Um, it's, yeah, so the, the forty-six one ninety, that, what is that line?
The nineteen.
The five dollar line?
Yeah, that's.
That's just an open line, right?
Five dollars has been in there for the last twenty odd years, just to keep the line open, and we, we put something in there.
That's what I thought.
We have to get.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Any questions for Dave? All right. Thanks for coming in, David, appreciate it.
See you guys later. Wait. Wait.
All right. Uh, move on to other items on the agenda. Police cruiser, key.
Our group cruising unit happened 10 months. So originally, when I priced it out last year, I was six and five cents, I did not. So for the DTA record account, I need the town, God, anybody, to approve expending any money on the DTA record account. So I'll look into, now, there are some of the funds that came up that I expected to get on our operating budget for the warranty. We have a five-year, $100,000 warranty, there's $3,000. So I just forgot my budget, we had it. And there's some other things that we purchased. But we'll get to a point where I want to stop taking stuff out of my operating budget because it's close to the end of the year. And that is what that becomes for. I don't want to come back every time I can get a bill, but I'm looking to extend no more than $700,000 to finish the car. And that will be.
Does that fit up?
That'll be graphics. Graphics are at least 1,500 if we go with the shipping graphic. If we go with light and light, we either paint the doors or they, they use some type of covering on them that are white in the graphic. So that being said, that is one of the reasons why we haven't graphic the car yet, just because we did get an estimate. I thought it was quite high, so I'll check a little bit vendors. And then there's some little things to unoperate radar. And some of the things that we did purchase were computer forehands and stuff like that, laptops. Those are stuff that we're just waiting to come in and all that stuff. So I can come back and mention every time that I have an invoice, but I'm looking, now, what I said normally, so I'm thinking it's only five, but I don't.
Or is it just the detail account?
Um, trying to get that now.
Oh, right.
At least 15, but we have a lot of money going to vendors.
Okay.
So we should.
15,000 or 15?
15,000. We should have, once everybody pays, we have some outstanding bills for two, last two or three months, which have been very busy. Both $6,000 and $7,000 on jet.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But when I say 75, I'm going on the high end. And I'm thinking it's only five, 5,500. But I just don't want to come back. Do you want to get an invoice?
Questions?
Are there grants for new radar units?
There are. We already purchased this radar unit last December, a night ago. We purchased the radar because of money. It was around 10%, custom. It was around 10%.
Aren't all your radars pretty tired?
Yeah, well, the new grant that we're applying for, which I was here about a month ago, we're gonna expand out of that DTA record account once and if we are granted that grant for the advanced housing agencies, which will replace the three, and that will do us all new radars.
I'll make a motion to approve up to 7500 to be used in the detailed account to finish the setup on the police cruiser.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? What else you got?
One other thing.
Do you have a favor?
EOG J Grant. This was sent to us back in October. It is for municipalities that have 10 of the last police officers. They will allocate up to $25,000. It's a 100% grant. So I explored some ideas with the fire chief. I have only been here a year, but I have seen a couple situations where we have thrown one light tower, which we utilize for Halloween tree tree on Sunday night. It runs on diesel, it's loud. We, in the past, from my understanding, is we have borrowed or rented light towers from other companies or even borrowed from the fire departments. We explored, this company here, they've created a proposal for 23,000 changes in electric solar-powered light tower, which is more efficient, doesn't take diesel, so it's loud. It allows us to put this in certain squad, or some of our neighbors. We can have that out by Summer Street, next to you, or Tri-Tree, or even down, excuse me, at Summer Street. The scats, it was dark there, but they're at Tri-Tree. You know, we get some swamp street with the light towers, it's loud. Fire chief, they're talking about changing, they can't go back. So, you know, we know that we have the towers. You know, if we get this, if they grant this grant, it's not 100%, I don't think I'd get it. But now we have a sign that's, you know, my worry is, I don't want this stuff out in the elements, you know, here. You know, this is, they are going to have it plugged in, so when you need it, it's ready to go. Like I said, it's a grant. The deadline for the grant is November 18, so I wanted to go in front of the board. This is what the fire chief and I came up with. They have $500,000 on municipalities, and so they can enter for each, allocating $25,000. This will be a lot.
Is there a matter of power for us?
Zero.
Not great. Even better.
So that's something that we could use down at the rent, too?
That's a grant. I think of that.
It's, now, it's not, if it's not a diesel?
No, it is actually, it's solar. They can read what it says, it's 40 hours. I made a video that I could use that, the rent.
Great. Have that.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. All right, Rockland County Tax Awards. This is just a letter from the Rockland County Treasurer indicating that the warrant for 2022 is $26742 that they will be collecting this December. Any questions about the county warrant?
This is just their portion of the tax.
Yeah, exactly. They know, fine, they're gonna play. All right. Uh, that's all done. Current use change tax. So there's two documents here regarding Lila Drive. Lila Drive is the new development up on Old Lee. They are taking property, moving property from current use for the road. And they're taking property out of current use, I think, for parcels. Right? Yep, parcels. The parcel ones actually have a current use tax. The road does not have a tax implication as a road. Questions about these two documents on current use for Lila? Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the late use change tax bills and a warrant for late use change tax for Lila Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? There are some signatures. Thank you. Two signatures. Um, next up, we have the equalization data. So every year, we certify the assessment and sales information from the town assessor, who is Rob Wood and Associates. This is the data reflecting appraised value versus sale price values. And this goes to the state for equalization formulas and at the state level for property tax assessments. Right now, our ratio has dropped from in 2020. You know, we, it basically matches up when we, or comes close to matching up when we do a town-wide appraisal, assessment, I mean, assessment. And then, over the subsequent years, as you get to the next assessment time, typically drops, ours drop pretty substantially down to about a 70% ratio, that being the appraised value to the sale price here in the average sale price that you're in town. So this is the data that Rob Wood provides us, and we need to certify it for the state.
So do you anticipate next year, since we're going through an assessment cycle right now, right?
Yep.
That next year, that ratio might go up?
Oh, it'll go back to close to 100, 100%. Because that, typically what happens is that the assessments, you know, over time, sale prices go up versus the assessed values. And then the assessments will basically reset when we do a timeline assessment that's much closer to sale price values. And so that ratio then goes back close to 1 to 1 as opposed to the, you know, the 70%. That would happen, you know, close to 100% versus the 70.5% we're at currently. And that's cyclical. It typically happens in most towns that, once they do an assessment and bring it up, over time, presumably, property value will ratchet higher. Typically, Seacoast New Hampshire, you get much more of a ratchet than you do in other parts of the state. And this just allows the statewide property taxes to be better assessed across all the, all the towns in the state.
So with that increase in '23, how does that impact the property taxes? Do you see that, like, will that be a spike in the taxes?
No, no, it won't, it won't affect how much property tax you would necessarily collect. Because that's based really on us doing the budget and determining how much money the town needs to do. Where it will have an impact is not on the municipal line, but it may have an impact on the statewide education line of our property tax. Maybe a small change on the county line, but the county line isn't. It's a statewide property tax. It's really the biggest factor where, when we reset, we'll end up probably contributing more because property values here have probably appreciated faster on the Seacoast than, let's say, Southern border. And so we'll pay more for that. But within the town itself, the municipal line won't change that. It may change depending on how new assessments go in town. Somebody may be paying a little more percentage-wise of the town property tax because their property appreciated more so than other people in town. Questions, comments? I'll move that we accept the municipal assessment data as provided by R.B. Wood and Associates for the state, New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration.
Second.
Second, my lady. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. Um, we have Rockland Planning Commission. Their dues request for 2023. We paid $1,769 for the current fiscal year. That's going up to $1,790 for 2023. The Planning Commission has been a great resource for the most part for a variety of services here in town, whether it's on the conservation side, planning side, transportation side, stormwater management. So it's certainly something that I think is a reasonable increase given everything else that's going on. Any other questions about Planning Commission dues?
No.
No, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the payment of the 2023 dues request for the Rockland Planning Commission.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you. So if you're down there, I want you to come up and talk about the records. In the meantime, a couple things. So based on the comments that we all had about the young contract, I sent that to Jim. He revised that contract. I sent it over to Derek to take a look. So as soon as we get comments back from Derek. Jim included a, another provision in the contract for spring cleanup day. So, and of the edits that you picked up on. So we should be good unless Derek asks some questions. But with a little luck, we get that back before next meeting and we have that to take care of quickly.
I heard you coughing.
You heard me? Excellent. Uh, vital writers' preservation.
Yeah, so every year, I put $2,000 in the budget to vital writers' preservation. And I try to do some of the almost every year. So I was intending on getting a motorbike grant. And I originally had Co-Pile, a company that does the work, come out and do an assessment. And at that time, it was, we wanted to put about $10,000 worth of documents to be done, and it's on the last page. Old records from the 1800s.
Is it the South New Market records we have item?
Yes.
1853 to 1860, 1860, 1872?
Yeah, yes. But then at my town conference a couple weeks ago, this company, Co-Pile, told me that ARPA funds will pay for preservation of vital weapons. And I think you've all seen the way the vital weapons look after they've been all restored, they're in nice binding, they cover the years, and what's inside it under binding, they're very nice, they're leather bottles. So they completed a novel list for me of other minutes, select many minutes from the 60s and 70s through 1983, and other military records, just old records that we have in the vault. And the total for all records, if we were to use ARPA funds, would be 18,385. So it's not. They like to use that, but we, one is done. Once they, once they're preserved, they're also.
Is this, is this the last batch that you, that we have left?
They might need some more, but this is just what they thought was a priority because of maybe they're hand-stolen in a book that's bound in leather or they're disintegrating. So this was the priority list that they gave me. I do have other records that eventually I would like to have fixed, but they're not to match. I'm just seeing one.
Well, why, not that you're gonna know, but I have to ask the question. Why are the selectmen meetings notes from the 60s and 70s, a lot, the most expensive items, whereas, you know, birth certificates for 70 years from the 1870s onward is not?
Those are loose records, the ones that are cheaper? The other ones are remaining lighter. I'm not buying from hand-stolen, like a book.
Yeah, more labor to basically scan.
Yeah. So that, I think, why?
Are meeting minutes are considered vital records?
Um, they're not vital records, but they're records that need to be preserved, need to be kept permanently. So it's a good idea to have those preserved. Because on here, that'll. Because on the other, I actually said, imaging, Aqua Foods for imaging of items also, which made me think about, you know, just something, made me think about how maybe all these complaining board files that I have out back, and all the old CBA files, or maybe I could get someone to scan those someday, you know, because, well, I don't have them again, but it would be covered in the Aqua Funds, and then we would then have to worry about those records again.
But that, and not a free space in every wood?
It would, yes, it would all be electronic. We do that now with our tax assessment records, we scan them all, but we never go out to the planning board, the Sony board that's out back, and that storage area.
Those are the older records?
Yeah.
Older tax assessor records?
Yes, they kind of pile, planning board minutes and CBA minutes from the 60s and 70s, they just all need to be scanned and put into the proper files. So that was another.
So with this, you're, you'll end up getting the nice rebound books?
Yes.
Do you also get the electronic records?
Yes, that's included.
Okay.
So we'll have them electronic and bound?
Yes. So microfilm, do people still use microfilm? I'm just curious, I notice they don't list microfilm. Because it's a 16, they won't need a microfilm.
Well, I mean, I'm sure they do that for libraries, because libraries, it's probably a service they provide. I would say that we would not require that, I think, I mean, unless I'm wrong, the only thing we would want is a digital copy and a hard copy.
And they didn't, they did for every book that they've done.
So then it's the, so on your last page?
Yes.
They have them on microfilm as well, do they need them on microfilm?
I don't think so.
So we could take that?
This was done back in December of 2021, when I just was getting ready to get that moose grant, was going to come out with a moose grant, and they said $10,000 was a good amount of money to try to get for the grant, so they just came up with some records that, you know, kind of came up almost and ran.
So.
The priority.
So, just helping out you, so I'm looking at the two last pages in terms of pricing.
Yes.
Are these two different? I'm trying to figure out, these are two different things.
They are.
Invoice records on the back page, and then other records on the first page.
Yes.
Okay.
Because this first page is what, CoBio found?
Yes, this is the newest and revised pricing, which is, when I entered this up, it was $15,140, but they said the revised pricing for all of each document was $18,385.
Well, if we took out the microfilm, right on the back side, that makes that $92.50, plus the $75.70 on the page before, something close to $17,000. They said it was 18 on the revised.
$18,385, that may include, what was I guessing, economy? They do send a box, you can send all the documents to them or the books, maybe that's what they're trying to track, I don't know.
All right, is there any views on this, for us to act on this, or can we take some time to look it over?
Yeah.
So is everything you have to go down to Texas, or do it in the regions?
No, they do it locally.
Locally?
Yes. In Texas, possibly?
At the bottom.
Because they are, why, wherever Johnson, Vermont?
Yeah, CoFile, Or Information, Dallas, Texas.
Cedar Springs, Cedar Springs, Dallas, Texas.
Maybe that's where the headquarters is, because they have different locations.
Yeah, I think they did regional, sort of, trucking.
Why you're in Johnson, Vermont.
Oh, is this revised pricing, so this pricing that they have here on page one is from a year ago? Right, that's $75.70? It says fall through 2021.
Yes, exactly.
So maybe their fees went up?
Yes, so both of them were from December, and one was from, no, they're both from December second, yes, correct.
Okay.
Well, that's the price that's on, was $18,385.
And what are the, I'm sorry, what are the invoice records on the last page? What are invoice records?
Oh, they're, I have, I'll have to show them to you, they're all in those big gray archival boxes, I haven't looked at them in so long, I let them do their own assessment, so I guess we would have to look at them.
What are they?
And are those, they're, you know, chickens, and, you know, how many chickens people have, and how, I don't know.
So it's, it's, it's all kinds of records?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not the records for South New Market that they have listed here, right?
Someone's in our consulting market, but he was questioning the invoice about that.
No, I, no, I know, I'm just wondering if.
Yeah, records for South New Market, that was one of them.
Yeah.
Does, is, are they incorporating these invoices, because the dates are the same?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, invoice records are 1853 to 1872, and then the records for South New Market are 1850 to 1888?
They, they probably are South New Market records, to be honest, we wanted to look at that with, it's been a year, since 2021.
Did they do both of these?
They did.
Okay, so.
It was the initial one, and then the new representative just sent me this version today.
So I'm just wondering, did they combine these two things?
I guess I would have to double check on that.
So then maybe, but you said they gave you the revised price, you say $18,000?
Yes. I can double check to make sure.
I'm just curious if that, you know.
All right, let's take a look at it.
Okay.
And, and maybe you can double check on the pricing?
I will.
Just to make sure.
I will do that.
All right, great.
Very good.
Oh, while you're here for a second. So we also got the contract for the revaluation, which will be done in 2023. So this is the regular periodic reassessment of all the properties in town.
So they do five years?
Every five years. It doesn't cost us anything, it's done basically under the contracted services, but we need to enter into a specific contract for this, because this, this goes to the equalization issue we were talking about earlier, in terms of the data going to, across all statewide towns. Does anyone make a question about this contract? If you had a chance to take a look, it's pretty straightforward. They're gonna basically reassess every property in town, 780 something like that, is that right? No, no other questions?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for revaluation with R. B. Wood and Associates for the 23rd.
Second.
Second by all, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we have revenue expenses, and we have minutes from last meeting to do. Let's take a quick look at those.
What are you gonna do?
Um, whichever you like, we'll do revenue expenses, you already dived into that, so we'll, we'll do that.
All right, do I have a question about paving?
Yep.
Page 18, we have not used any of the budget for paving yet.
Well, that will change on the next report. They are paving sandbourn and redoing, they just paved sandbourn, reclaimed it, repaved it, and did the intersection at Volco Road this past week. So those invoices haven't come through, but that will, you know, that will chew up a bunch of the, of the funding in the paving budget.
I'm just wondering, because we, I know we put off some projects that ended up not happening, so will they, what will they do with the money that, to me?
Well, if it doesn't get used, it basically will go to the undeserved, undesigned fund balance, which is true of any department, right? Anything that the departments don't use, whether it's a thousand, whether it's a hundred thousand, ends up in our undeserved fund balance, and, you know, that's, that's how that fund balance basically built up. But, yeah, I don't know what the numbers are for the paving, what was paving out there, but that was, you know, was slated to be done, what was slated to be done, this year was Summer Pleasant, but again, we defer that and have a new sandbourn and finish off the Volco Road intersection. And so I expect that in our revenue expense budget for next month, those invoices will click.
Were we covering Summer and Pleasant with Aqua Funds, though?
No, Summer and Pleasant, we're gonna be paving funds, but we received a large grant to do the stormwater, and so instead of doing those streets this year, and then when we do the stormwater next year, we're gonna, we'll do it at the same time. Other questions about revenue expense?
Good.
You with that one? Great, and take a look at the minutes from last meeting.
Any update on the insurance requirement to the lake?
Yes, actually, I have a ring here, as well, the items I've generated, so a couple things on the ring. One is the insurance company, Seagull, will cover, liability-wise, it falls under our existing insurance, so there's nothing additional that we need to do for that, which is great. Number two, so I went down and looked at the field with Brian and he brought conservative equipment to look at the grading, what grading may need to be done. There's a, it's an 80 by 50 ring, so it's fairly sizable, I was actually, when we sized it out, I was like, wow, this is big, this is great. But we may need to do some grading for about a third of the size of the ring, just to keep it level, because, you know, obviously with the party, you can't, you can't do it very. So looking at that, I, I reached out to the sellers and asked them about that. What we would probably do is just put loam down, not any gravel or anything, just put some loam down and level it out, and seed it in the spring. And I made, I notified them of that and said, look, do you have a problem with this? They said, let us talk about it, and we'll get back to you. I don't anticipate it'll be a problem, but, you know, their, their property, their rules. But with a little luck, they certainly love the idea of people using the field more, so I'm hopeful that that won't be a problem, but I'll have to hear back from them before, before we can do that. But otherwise, everything else seems to be good with us being able to utilize the ring from a time and place anywhere.
Do we need to think about increased traffic to that area, parking for people? How are we gonna manage that kind of thing?
Well, I mean, typically when we've done events down there, whether it was a tree sale, whether it was even, you know, things like Memorial Day, there hasn't been an issue. If it becomes an issue, you know, we'll probably have to figure out some rules about that. I mean.
Well, we haven't had anything down there that's been a full season long, so I think, you know, it's not, we can't really compare it to a one day.
Right, well, I think one thing that we'll, one thing we may wanna look at is basically, it'll be there, but, you know, maybe only having the lighting, like on Friday nights or on Saturday, on Saturday nights, kind of has a, you know, we'll provide the lighting for these days, because I don't think we wanna do that every single night, right? You know, maybe like a Friday night skate type thing, and then, you know, we'll see how the turnout is and figure out from there. I mean, I don't know what we can do ahead of time, unless we wanna just require people to park down in CoBay, but short of that, I, I think it's kind of a, let's see how popular this is, and then if there's, if there are issues, I think we can probably address them. I think people would just park on Summer Street, to be honest with you.
Walkover.
Outside of that, I don't think there's any plan. Okay. Any questions, comments about the meeting minutes for Tuesday, October 25th?
Good.
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Second.
Second by all, all in favor? Aye. Any votes?
Sorry, I didn't.
Oh, no, sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Not, not wrong. You good?
Yep.
Oh, I'll do it again, make a motion to approve the minutes as written for Tuesday, October 25th, 2022.
Second.
Second by all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One other thing that you raised last meeting, Old Lee, I talked to Brian about that, he said he's gonna be cold patching as they go until they redo the road, so, you know, he, I think they were actually doing it last week when they were doing sandbourn, I think he had somebody go up there, at least that, that's what he indicated, but, you know, he'll be regularly trying to look at it and keep patching as, as need be.
I, I talked to Bobby today, and I don't think he's been up there.
Okay, okay. I will reach out to him, but, you know, feel free to just send him an email, send Brian an email, that, that's an email about this, can you make sure you go and patch up on, up on, later. All right, anything else?
Anything, Michael, any property, any, your back?
No, I haven't heard back at all. Derek had reached out, Chris Hilton, I think I told you at the last meeting, but I have not heard anything new since then, my guess is this will go to Ochim since they haven't moved in Iwata, and were at November 1st meeting, when they said they were gonna do something, so.
Who will be doing Ochim next?
On the 15th, I think Chief is in. Do you know, is anybody else scheduled for the 15th?
No.
Okay, that'll be a big one, so. And then, the ones that we have left after that, the big old ones are Road Agents, we've done Library, Mercy Management is pretty cut and dry, Jeff Dinsler in for that, and then Sue for. And then Sue for General Government and Administration and Launches. And that, that'll cover most everything in terms of departments.
Yeah, I spoke to Maurice O'Connell this week and last week, who's a CSX agent and also worked with Peter Braden. Maurice said they have gotten a grant, a federal grant to cover down these two travels to clean it up.
Oh, good.
And they've also put together their plan for track cleanup on the pan and track area. But he asked me to send him some photographs of the issues in town, which I googled and sent it to him, and he thinks he maybe will be a local crew.
Okay.
They want their local track crews to come up and clean it up.
Oh, okay, great.
As Jeff admitted too, it is the red road and their entity unto themselves, so, but it's, it's in work and like all good things, they've tired.
Did he indicate, if they, what timing, either of the grants are to the local crew that'd be doing it, like over the next year, next three years?
Maybe the next year. It's, it's still, it's still.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I understand.
But we're, communication is still transpired, so I take that as a good sign, we're setting a little bit after all.
Okay. Right.
I think to go back into non-public, if you don't mind, under two D, before we adjourn.
Consideration of the acquisition sale of the property? Okay. Great, motion to go back into non-public under ninety-one A, two D. Is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
One second, two seconds?
Ah, Hobie. Great.